Well, just past 5:00 and I think it's time to start our study session. With that being said, I'll ask Summer to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Commissioner Norwood?
Here.
Commissioner Baker is not here. Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Stallings?
Here.
Commissioner Orr?
Here.
And Mayor?
Here. Here.
For him.
Item number two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session tonight. You know? I actually have a question and Raleigh, maybe you can help me with this. Just a clarification, on 7.4 to 7.9, that's the bids on the water lines.
That's correct.
Will these projects start all at the same time? I know Luckenbille's got four of the seven, I think it is.
Right, six.
Tell me the schedule. How will that work so it doesn't disrupt traffic too bad?
Right. So, when we had the pre-construction, pre-bid meetings, so we asked the contractor to complete all the projects within three years. So, every project when they start construction, they got a contract time, they bid it. So, on the Luckenbille case, they are going to bid like one after the other. So, it's not going to be all the same time.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, we won't have seven of these things starting up all at one time?
Not seven, but three of them because we got two other contractors. They are going to start working simultaneously with Luckenbille.
It's also my understanding, though, they're kind of scattered around so they won't...
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. So, it shouldn't disrupt just a whole lot of stuff?
And also, most of the time, this is a work behind the curve. So, only the streets where we are going to cross, across the street or intersections, those are the only locations that's going to be impacted for the traffic.
Okay.
And these are all like local streets, not main thorough streets. It should not be that traffic impacted.
Yeah. And I'm all about replacing water lines. I love that, but I just, I thought seven of those things, boy, that could be, that could be a lot.
Yes.
So, okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or concerns they want to talk about? No? Okay. Item 3.1, brief engineering project update. Jason?
Thank you. I'm going to update you briefly on just two projects that kind of got some traffic impacts in the community. The first project is the reconstruction of 66th Street, which is out on the east, I guess it's that way, on the east side of town, between, just north of Willow and between Breckenridge Road. The contractor is down to about one more pour, one final pour. Their contract time ends January 15th, and so barring good weather, they should be substantially completed by that time. It will be the intentions that the road will be open at that time. There will be some additional work that will be taking place, ditch repair, shoulder work, a couple driveways still will be left to be done, but the road will be open as far as that goes. Second project that I'd like to talk to you about briefly is the Cleveland Street Widening Project, which is over north of the railroad tracks, north of the small mart, sorry, neighborhood market, and just south of Willow. That project is actually kind of the timeline for it actually moved up a little bit. First time that I, or not the first time, the last time I spoke on the project, the date for the start, for the closure was actually February 15th, I believe is what it was. They've actually requested to move that timeline up to Monday. So, you should have seen, I think there was a press release that went out last week to the public on that issue, or not that issue, that change. But the, since speaking with the contractor, speaking with the railroad, the railroad was kind of setting on go and they were like, well, why are you waiting to the 15th? And we said, well, we thought, you know, we thought you wanted to, and they said, no, we're ready to go. So, that's why that moved up. So, the work on the tracks and the work kind of there just north of the tracks is all going to be taking place, beginning the 13th with the road closure there at, Raleigh, help me out, I forgot the name of the street. Rolling Oaks, thank you so much. There, Rolling Oaks. So, there'll be a traffic detour around there, around those sections, so that not a whole lot of traffic will be going down Rolling Oaks. Other than that, I think she'll have some questions. That's all I have.
Orr, did you say, are you going to control traffic down Rolling Oaks?
It'll be local traffic only, yes.
Okay. Are you going to just post that as a sign? Is that what you're going to do?
That's the intention, yes. If it becomes an issue, let us, you know, let us know and we can step it up.
And on the 66th Street, you said that would be open on January 15th?
That's the intent, yes, ma'am.
And that's all the way through?
Yes.
Because I know Pioneer Elementary has been affected, their bus routes have been affected by that, so I know they'll be happy to hear that.
Yes. There still will be some construction happening along there, but through traffic will be open.
Okay, great.
Okay. So, I'm just going to read this. Yes. Okay. Well, very good. I'm glad we're starting that early. The sooner we get started, the sooner we can open it back up.
That's what I, that was my thoughts.
So, I know it'll be an inconvenience, but that'll be a nice road through there.
Yes, sir.
One more question. Is there a projection on time?
For the closure or for the...
For the opening?
[laughing]. Well, there's always projections. It's slated for 90 days, and that is on, that, in discussions with the contractor, that is on the big end.
It's on what?
That's on the big end, like, kind of, I don't say worst-case scenario, but...
You think they can do it in 90 days?
They can get it in more, in less time than that, so.
But now that 90 days is to where you will open it up and go through the other addition, right?
Yes, sir.
It's not completion of the road?
Yes, sir. Correct. Yeah. Well, the intent is they're going to, with this closure at the railroad tracks, they're going to work with the road closed as far north as possible, and that, you know, the further north they can get beyond that south Hunter's Hill entrance will allow, you know, even that much more traffic to be able to flow through the neighborhoods in that area. So, that's the intent of this closure right now, is to get as far north as to go.
Okay. Okay. Other questions or comments? Anybody?
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. All right. Well, I will tell you, it's no secret, I am excited about this next portion, 3.2. It's been a long time coming that we've been working on this to get to this point. So, item 3.2 here, presentations from consultants from Half, am I saying it right? Half?
Half.
It's fine.
Half?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Kimberly Horn on the new youth sports complex. Raleigh?
Mayor, Commissioners, for the past five months, city staff is working on getting the projects, working on bringing the engineer onboard. The first step was going after RFQ process. So, we went, we opened the project, we're getting RFQ, and we received about 14 firms responded for our RFQ. After the selection committee went through, we selected down to seven firms, we went, we submitted, we requested for, requested for proposals from six firms, and the top two firms, they are going to present today, Half and also Kimberly Horn, they are going to be presenting their proposals this evening. The main thing, once the selection has been gone through, there are a couple things, like on the scope of the services, going to be the input from the stakeholders and the public, there will be meetings set, and also the feasibility of the existing site is going to be part of the initial scope, and also preliminary concept, and also preliminary design, part of the scope, and a cost estimate. So, these are the key items that we'll be looking after on the scope of services in the preliminary stage, once we've selected the top firm. So, today, this, this scope is not going to be for the whole project, like whole construction, so it's just going to be the initial phase, so. And the first firm, we got James from Half Engineers, so he's going to present it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I would just say, before you get started, James, you guys have some note sheets, I think, that might be helpful to you. They were laid out, oh, maybe I got them. Ah, let me pass them out. They've got some, perhaps some criteria you might consider as we hear presentations tonight, just for you to take notes, and if it works out right in the regular meeting, you'll make a decision and move us ahead.
Absolutely. Thank you. I just want to make sure that you all can hear me good. I live at a different altitude, so sometimes these microphones are challenging. Thank you so much for joining us here tonight on a cold winter day, but it's for such a great reason, we're very happy to be here before you today. So, real quick, just to talk about our agenda and what we're going to be doing today in this presentation, is a quick introduction of who we are and what firms we represent, our experience, programming and operations of what we see the facility needing, project understanding of what we've been tasked with so far and our understanding of the project, our approach, and then a work plan on how we're actually going to get this done. Also, a site analysis, and then we'll close with some slides and open up for questions at that point. I will say, if you do have questions throughout the presentation, as long as the time doesn't count against us, you're more than welcome to interrupt us and we'll go through those. So, the team before you today, myself, James Hazard, I'm the project manager of this project, and also the team leader for planning and landscape architecture in our Oklahoma City office. With me is Sally Horsy out of our Arkansas office. She's the practice, excuse me, the landscaping and planning director of Arkansas and Oklahoma. Also, Chris Burdick here, may be familiar face with EnviroTech for Site Civil and some other services on the project. Chris Tehe with Tap Architecture, and then JD Wood with Sports Facilities Company. But beyond this team that we have here today, we have a couple other firms, Half, excuse me, Half Tap does SFC, EnviroTech, and then Horner Engineering would be doing MEP, once we get to that stage, and then Whiten Associates to do cost estimating throughout the process. And then just to give you a little bit more depth, just to make sure if you've read our proposals or our qualifications, we do have a deeper bench, and some of these folks listed here are the key members that would be involved in the project. So, not only do you have the leadership here of the team, but then you have kind of other critical roles here listed as well. A few that I want to point out would be funding services, so knowing that this project is still in motion, it's a vision, we want to make sure that we're able to support you with funding options as well, should that be needed in the process. And then to balance the team out, we have a number of different staff, depending on what the project schedule demands of us or the scope of the project. And with that, I will turn it over to Sally Horsy.
Hi, I'm Sally Horsy. Very nice to be here tonight, and thank you for having us. Wanted to share a few projects with you that we have done in the past. We have a very strong bench of folks that work on ballpark projects, and we have a large resume of that, as you have probably seen to get to this point. So, the first one I wanted to show is Majestic Park in Hot Springs. This is a historic park. It has five fields. It's a small facility. They're all artificial turf fields, and because of this, this facility is booked nonstop. This is something that we want to do for Enid as well, to bring you with economic generator, economic impact generator, where you will have tournaments, if that is what you want to do. This facility, if you look on Google, it's booked from February all the way through mid-July on the calendars. The first year, this brought in a million dollars to the city, and it's just been a real hit, being a historic MLB connection. Babe Ruth played here for the Spring League training in MLB back in the turn of the century, being the first turn of the century, the 1800s, late 1800s. And so, there is that connection with Cy Young and Onis Wagner and a whole slew of the guys at that time period. So, there is a larger, larger-than-life bronze statue of Babe Ruth here, and that makes a great Instagrammable shot for the kids. They love to have their picture with Babe, and it's just, this was, like the rest of these, is all community-driven. So, these are all going to be very unique to these towns, and working with the communities is going to develop something unique for you as well. Okay. Reeves Park, the second one, this is in Norman, Oklahoma. Very large facility, similar to what you're looking at. This is 14 fields in Norman. It has, I'm sorry, this looks a little bit different. The softball location is adjacent to OU softball program, so there's a lot of programming that went on there with this. The green space in the middle with the trees is the medieval fair event that happens once a year, so that had to be included in this park. So, not only is this, and also Majestic Sports Facilities, it also has community activities within it, too, connected to trail systems, playgrounds, picnic rentals, all of those can be combined as well. And then AC Kaplener over in Edmond, this is one that we've been working on, has 10 fields within it, and this is a lot of challenges on this site. Unfortunately, the park locations are not always prime real estate. This one had a landfill, had a gas main through it. What else, James? The topography, had a lot of topography to deal with. Your site doesn't have quite as much, but it does still have that, as Chris will go into in a minute. So, we're well-versed in dealing with the technical aspect of the engineering for ballpark facilities through our experience. Edmond, Route 66 Ballpark in Edmond is another one that I had the opportunity to work with Tap Architects on. This one is an adult softball complex, was master-planned for eight, and they wanted to do something that was really unique in keeping with Route 66. So, we worked with Tap, and they came up with this unique architecture that's symbolic of the Route 66 kind of time period, the 50s, 60s, and that gives a lot of character to this park. So, a lot of thought on the forefront of this, and Chris will talk more about the architecture components as well. This aquatic facility in Moore, Oklahoma, is another Tap project, a large facility, 60,000 square feet, 50-acre site. They handled the programming, worked with the city to create this recreation center and this great project for that community. And we have EnviroTech onboard. They're obviously very familiar with Edmond, as this is their home. They know the site well, dealing with commercial and residential subdivision layouts, and will be our engineer for the project. This time, I'll turn it over to JD.
Happy to be here with you guys today. So, the complex here is Cyclone Ballpark in Pecos, Texas. Essentially, it's a 12,000-person community that was tired of traveling everywhere for their, for their local kids to play. So, they basically built a five-field turf complex, and then they actually have done so well with those five fields, will bring in tourism and local usage, they're actually building four more right now. So, they'll have nine fields currently in that project, and again, it's only 12,000 people. So, it definitely is an opportunity to showcase what you can be done, even with limited fields. Public sports complex in Panama City Beach, Florida, this is personally one of my favorites because I was the GM that helped build this complex. The one thing that I love about this is the multifaceted nature of the field. So, you have 13 fields total, nine synthetic, four natural grass. Those nine synthetic can be 10 baseball fields, 10 softball fields, or 10 soccer, football across fields, right? So, it gives you multitude of opportunities. Because of that, they actually, the last two years, have generated over $100 million of economic impact from the events that they bring in. So, it gives the example of when you have larger numbers, what you can do, and when you have a destination and an attraction. So, the great job that visiting Enid does, right? Like, they're already bringing events, imagine if they had a venue like this. So, I'm here to talk to you guys about, a little bit about programming and operations from the perspective of how SFC, sports facility companies, can supporting Half and the team and being a part of this team. So, as you see, this is what we call concept to concrete. This is how we support some communities from the pre-development work all the way through management at the end of it. We're only here to talk about and only being represented for the pre-development side, doing the studies, the feasibility aspect of this. So, give me the example of who we are. So, we do 3,000 communities, we've served over 3,000 communities currently around the U.S., and we operate 70 venues as well. The reason why that is relevant from the venue operations is because we look at the lens of the study through an operating perspective, right? So, when we tell you, hey, this is what it's generating, we're generating that at 70 different venues across the country, right? So, it showcases why our data points are very specific to Enid, but then also specific to the industry as a whole. And so, at the end of this, the part of the study side of it that we're doing, you'll be able to, what you, you know, confirm what you have planned, what is, what you need, is it feasible? How to operate it, what you can bring in, what the events, economic impact looks like, and kind of that cost and cost recovery. So, it kind of lines up all of those items for you. Again, we're here for the study aspect, that's the team, the part of the team we are. So, strategic and master planning, so looking at vision and strategy, what that looks like, what 12 fields, what is going to get you, what can bring. Market research, concept validation, does this make sense? Is this the size of the fields? Is this what you need? Is this the setup of the fields, of the venue? Is it feasible? How do you make your cost recovery? How do you make your, you know, is it break even? Or is it providing the good things in life with parks and recreation, right? Those are the kind of discussions, your goals are our goals. We'll have those discussions with you. And then public projects, again, community engagement. This whole team is built on being a part of this community and having those discussions, and that is important to all the conversations that we're having. So, I really like this map. So, if you see, Enid, I know you guys know this, right? Enid, where the location, y'all's location, so two hours to all the metro areas. I love it because I always think of it from a marketing perspective. So, Enid is the home plate of Oklahoma right here, right? So, we want to host baseball, we want to have those events, we want to provide those opportunities to the community. This is what you can do here in this community. And the two-hour drive, anyone else can say that. The events that are already coming, enjoy this location and want to continue, expand upon that because of the community and invited, inviting nature of everyone when they're here. And then, again, the location is huge. It's, because, think about it, Wichita's not going to go to Oklahoma City, they're going to meet halfway, they're going to meet at home plate, right? That's where Enid can be a differentiating factor for everyone. Again, the first thing I think of when I see this market analysis is y'all's Parks and Recreation Department, again, this is what I can research online, with four full-time equivalent individuals, does a lot, and I love that for them, and it shows the passion that they have into all y'all's venues, and to continue. So, if you look at the venues that are represented on here, great venues, historic venues, that large-scale tourism baseball venue with multiple fields, right? Looking at that, Crossland with the six and three with baseball and softball, those kind of things, having that tourism anchor venue, that's what this complex can be. And so, you can see that kind of laid out in the proximity, how it all makes sense and what you're looking for from this venue. So, I know, talking about a lot of things, right? But what does this mean for Enid, right? What is all this? So, when I talk about, when we were researching Enid in this project, community and programming, right? So, this gives you more fields for T-ball, this gives you new programming. Not only are you doing baseball, but you're going to add, you can add kickball, you could do flag football, you can do disc golf, you can do all these kind of variables from a sports perspective, but also movies in the park, touch truck in the parking lots with the bounce houses on the fields, all these kind of variables, it gives you so many more opportunities to continue, expand what you have, but do new things. The Recreation Triad that does the events out here, they do a great job, as well as with the YMCA and Parks and Rec. But again, giving them more assets to be successful and to do more things is huge, right? As your community continues to grow. The other thing, too, most people don't think about, and it's kind of that marriage between community and tourism, is that your citizens are staying here. They're not having to drive two hours away to compete in sports, they're sleeping in their own bed. And so, yes, it's a tourism driver, but also what it does for your local citizens. They're also eating dinner here that night versus driving somewhere else. Tournaments and events, again, this is what I am able to research. So, if I'm incorrect, I apologize. It looks like right now, there's five U-SSA youth tournaments that are taking place, right? Well, having eight to 12 fields, especially the 12 number, especially in your competition area, it allows you to be that anchor tenant to host those events and be that driver. And so, you're not just going to go five, you're going to attend 15, 20 events, and those opportunities. Continue to expand. The 12-field model, we actually expect 12 teams per field. That gives you, you can host 114 tournament with those fields if you do the 12. So, that gives you a lot of flexibility, depending on how, you know, what you're looking for, age groups, things of that, to host. Also, it lets you elaborate on creating local internal events, and then think about when the junior NJCAA championships come here, if you could come, add a youth component to that, just continuing the families that travel in and making it a weekend to a week-long to two-week pieces of business. Those things are great. And the last thing, I always do partnerships and competition. This is where I like to say, we have friends, and then sometimes they're frenemies, right? So, on partnerships, we're going to work together with our community, our constituents, creating new clubs for club baseball and softball, new programming opportunities for different groups. We're also going to go against other communities to host these events and these programs, but sometimes, give a perfect game as an example, they need up to 64 fields in a certain area. So, having these other destinations that were mentioned by Sally, that is a plus to have in this area, because then you can host the even larger tournaments where they're here longer. And so, the competition, sometimes you're going to compete against each other, but a lot of times, you're going to work together, and having this venue allows Enid to be a part of those discussions. Headed off, go back to James.
Thank you, JD. So, as we, you know, have become familiar with Enid and the community here, we know that there's a long, deep, rich history of sports, athletics, and star athletes that have come from Enid. And really, what that's said to this team is, it kind of sets the bar for what we need to do. This is the expectation, but also the opportunity of what we can do with this facility in reinvesting in the kids and the community here to create that next athlete star. And so, really, what we've gathered from the process so far, just through the RFQ, RFP language of what's being asked of us, is to create a state-of-the-art facility, that it's a premier destination, not only for the residents of Enid, but also in the region, that we have a large tournament capacity, right? This is intended to be a revenue generator, and that's really what we are aiming for at this point. Embody the spirit of the community, which speaks to the history of the sports and athletics here, but then also, you know, paying homage to the existing facilities that you already have and everybody that has contributed to that over time. But then also contribute to what's existing in Enid for recreational opportunities or offerings. So, you know, JD mentioned a lot of opportunities, not only to program sports, but also things within the park, that this isn't something that sits idle. It needs to be programmed 360 days, 65 days a year to make it feasible, and something that the, that the community can celebrate. And so, with that, we wanted to form an approach. How do we go about this? Well, the first thing is to listen. We need to know what the community expects, what the community wants. It's listening to community members, to leaders, to city staff, understanding the issues or the opportunities here. And then how do we respond? So, not just inserting our own opinions, but really responding to what we hear. And then how we communicate that back is through graphics and other communication forms to either communicate to the city or the community about the options that we're looking at. And I really think that these three things are done with a comprehensive team. The people sitting here are part of that process, that we are looking at from all sides. It is not just... It is not just the 70 acres that, that has been outlined for us so far, it's much more than that. And if, if you don't look at everything else, you're going to miss something. And I think that's what our team provides above all others. And then our coordination with city staff, we're familiar with the city and how you operate. We have team members that are very dedicated to what's going on here. And then also, you know, we would be lying to ourselves if we don't say that things happen during a project, but the important thing is to be prepared for that. So having a recovery plan for schedule and for budgeting is really important from the very beginning, and we'll talk about that a little bit later as well. And then to start, ongoing, ongoing coordination with city staff from all levels, maintenance to engineering, to fire, to city leadership, council, it's, it's all very important, all the way through. And so with our work plan, it's really simple at its face value. The first is to gather all the information that we need to move forward. Taking all the inputs of information from all those involved, our experience, and then putting that into a master plan. A couple of options that city staff and the community can look at and respond to, tell us what they do or do not want to have in this plan. And then ultimately, we roll forward with there, from there, once we have a concrete idea of how we should move forward into construction documents and the full design. Ultimately, leading to bidding and construction. And there are steps along the way, and, and finite details of each one of those tasks, and we'll speak about those a little bit as well. But, again, so much of our approach and our work plan is about engagement, communication, and listening, that this toolbox for not only city staff, but the community, is really important, in how we proceed with this project. And there's a number of ways, really, we've identified some key tools in this toolbox, but there's a lot of other ways that we can approach this as well, depending on the scope and how you want to move forward. But it's opportunities like visiting peer facilities, so that you can actually see real-world application of what's going on. JD had a lot of experience across the country. There's some really local projects that we can look at as well, that give us regional context and understanding what our peers are doing, so we can be complementary to each other, and also, you know, have the best outcome for Enid. You know, sorts, all sorts of surveys, both internal, external with the community, a lot of graphic and written communication options for people to review. But then also, a, a series of committees, task committee specifically for this project, or an oversight committee, having one-on-one sessions with each individual council member or groupings of council members, to make sure that we're on the track, and you all are staying informed of the process. But then also, stakeholder committees. So whether it's operators, or parents of athletes, or, you know, the school district, or, there's, there could be a number of people that are involved in different committees, that all have a different perspective, and want to make sure we're gathering that information. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Chris to talk about site analysis.
Thank you, James. Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, Council Members. I want to start by saying that EnviroTech Engineering is extremely excited to be a part of the Half and Associates team on this project as a local representative. With that, I would move forward with site analysis. The, the property is, is approximately 70 acres, straight west of the, the existing advanced soccer complex. It has access to the city's infrastructure, from water sewer is adjacent to the property. So that's a, a big benefit of this property. It's zoned agricultural, so it should fit the scope of the project, which is another benefit. As it, as the property sits today, it's got a gentle slope from the, from west to east, and there is an existing detention pond on the east side of the proposed property, that based on the final design of the complex, would probably get adjusted or relocated, but definitely be redone to accept the new, the new complex. Access to the property would be off from South Garland, probably along the, the north side of the existing soccer complex, as well as the south side, along Roop, which is, you can see in the slide, is a, is a existing gravel road, which would need to be improved to, during the project or shortly after. Pedestrian access would be from the east, through the city's existing trail system, that stops at, at South Garland now, across the street from the existing soccer complex. So those are kind of the, the, the project outlays. The, the project is surrounded by a, a, a multiple zoning properties, from commercial to residential, to agricultural, which lends itself to future development. And also, it's, it's proximity to existing restaurants and, and retail properties out there, make it, make it a valuable site. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chris Teehee with Tap Architecture.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Teehee, I'm with Tap Architecture. We will definitely be involved with a lot of the, the planning here, so we leave the guys behind me and the team to, to engineer and look at everything below grade and above grade, but we, we are here to assist them with a lot of things, and we look at the existing conditions to start out with. Site orientation is very key here, as you know, parking will be, and will be a major factor in this development. Along with that, pedestrian accessways through the park, through the venue, through, through and around the fields. Looking at the existing relations of materials and context, we'll really dive into expanding on the ideas and really blending the materials, so we get a very cohesive design throughout the facility. So you really can't tell something from an existing or a new structure. Looking at types of construction, obviously, there's not too many structures out here, but we would look at trying to definitely tie in and blending those as well, to really allow that to follow through the design phases, to make sure we stay on budget. With that, the visual identification throughout the site. Architectural elements and vertical elements really can define spaces, as you can see on the top right. A, a simple CMU wall kind of encompasses a sitting area, so a lot of vertical elements can create useful spaces. Wayfinding elements or structures, as you can see on the top left, some masonry columns at entry points. Those can be, those monumental pieces can be kind of wayfinding or guidance for the visitors throughout the grounds. The sports and community gathering spaces, again, you guys have had a great vision and have a great start on a state-of-an-art complex, and I am super excited, and I know this team is, to, to really expand on that and give you that premier facility that you guys are Like I mentioned, programming, again, we're, we're kind of more responsible for a lot of things above grade, but we are still tied into a lot of program elements, and down the road, we would be heavily involved with the users, everything, everybody involved in making decisions on that. This is not limited to, but batting cages, locker rooms, changing rooms, maintenance facilities, so any kind of structure that would be in use, not only for the public, but for the facility as well. Again, thank you, I'm very excited about this, and I'll turn this back over to James.
So, taking all that information in, right? That, that's the first step in this process. And so just internally, as we've moved forward, we wanted to think about what the conceptual design of this site would be. Just with the information that we have before us today, this is some ideas we've generated internally, and the, the number of concepts that we generated outside of this even, speaking about all the different options and variables that we could implement here, we just need to know what you and the community want. So as we start to look at these different concepts, one started to speak to us more than the other, and quickly, we, we visualized what could be on this site. Meeting the criteria of the number of fields and the programming, we wanted to really just kind of help vision things moving forward, and, and how we could improve the site, and extend what's already there, and really expand on it. So just starting off, we have 10 fields total. You can see two of the wagon wheels there with the five fields. The two remaining fields would be close to what is, is in the center of the site at your existing championship soccer field. Those would be potentially premier, you know, championship fields for baseball, but also have the flexibility to host soccer and football on those as well. It's a good dual-use combination. Now, that all to say, there's no reason why you couldn't do artificial turf on all fields, but if budget came to be an issue, there are creative ways to balance that out in the programming of the site. I also want to point out the parking nodes that we've added to this, approximately 300 additional spaces just in this first pass. I'm confident that we can squeeze out more in other locations, or even expanding on the parking lots that we have. This would be in addition to your roughly 250 spaces you have on site. When we're looking at parking related to the number of fields, rule of thumb is 50 to 70 spaces per field, and that is related specifically to the programming of your site. So if it's a more tournament-focused facility, you're going to have several teams, JD was speaking, you'll have 12 teams on one field. That's a lot of cross-traffic, and a lot of teams just sitting on standby, hanging out at the concessions. So we want to make sure that parking is adequate for the programming of the site. We also have detention, knowing that drainage is an issue across the city, and one of the reasons why we have EnviroTech on the team as a trusted member there. One of the other things that we noticed, just with the existing maintenance facility, is it, it's enough for what's there, but should anything be added to it, it would definitely have to be expanded. In talking to your maintenance staff while we were visiting onsite a few weeks ago, it was apparent that an expansion was needed, especially for an additional facility as the baseball fields would provide. So just for operations and programming, cost efficiency, we would recommend a combined larger maintenance facility out of the, kind of out of the way of the main function of the site. And then as we move further east, I do want to note the Loop Road that goes just on the west and the south side of the existing detention. This would alleviate traffic congestion with ingress egress to this site, but then also, you'll notice that we flagged future commercial buildup. There are already allocated pad sites or space for retail fronting Garland, so we know that that, that's the initiative there, but we vision this to have a much larger impact with not only games, but also development in and around the site, whether it's single-family, other commercial retail hotel sites. And so we think that this road would help serve that function. So then as we're thinking about the nuts and bolts of the project, bidding and construction, really becomes apparent how critical the innovative solutions up front are needed to have a successful project long-term and throughout the process. So, starting with cost estimating is done at every single milestone, that's to help keep the project in check and understand where we're headed with the budget. And that would primarily be during construction documents, but we'll also be doing cost estimating throughout the design phase as well. But it's good to establish your budget during design, your, your conceptual design, but then check that at every milestone through construction documents. Constructibility analysis, so making sure that we're not putting out an idea that's too crazy that can't be built, that also has an impact on cost. Operations and maintenance analysis, that's really where FSC and JD and his team come in to making sure that this is a, a logical process from the very start to the end, all the way through that first pitch. Funding solutions, knowing that you all are in the process of building this vision and capturing funds to make this a reality. A phased approach may be needed, and so thinking about that through conceptual design all the way through construction documents, and putting forward a logical step-by-step process to phase in anything that may be needed. And then, with EnviroTech's support, looking at detention borrow. Now, this may be kind of a, a simple thing, but it's a huge cost to a project of just moving dirt, and knowing that there are two locations close to the site that could be borrow pits, knowing that we already need another four feet out of your existing detention pond to the north, that's a great way to save costs, should it be acceptable fill for the fields. And then knowing where the utilities are, so shortening that exploration timeframe, and just knowing how to plug this project into what you already have, and making the most of it there. I already mentioned the shared maintenance facility, but again, that's a great way to make this project economical. And then just quickly, over our, our schedule, design to construction documents is approximately 12 months, depending on the scope and what all you want to do. Certain phases of this could be extended or shortened, depending on what that may be. But ultimately, we know we can accomplish your three years to your first pitch goal here. And then our commitment to you and this project, knowing that we have dedicated staff to this project, the leadership here in front of you, and their staff supporting, with these firms, we know that we have the resources to make this a reality. And then lastly, why Half and our team is the best fit for this project? We have local knowledge of this community and your leadership, we're going to stand by you and support you on this. We have the national experience to bring to Enid, Oklahoma, through sports and tourism, being the paramount phrasing there. We're dedicated, we have local project leadership that's here and available at a moment's notice, and we have proven project experience in youth athletics specifically, and much more than that. So with that, I'll turn it over to you all for any questions that you may have for our team. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know how to answer that question.
Sure. All right. Well, first of all, thank you, that was very helpful. I've got several questions I want to ask, but before I do, I'm going to open up to my commissioners, and you guys, Commissioner Patterson, I know you do, I can just tell you're sitting there dying to ask.
I just want to make sure I understand, the synthetic fields that you were talking about would be reserved for the championship fields?
In our first pass of this, that's the most balanced approach. Obviously, our recommendation would be to do as much synthetic turf as possible, depending on what your programming and your output is desired. So if you really want to go all-in on tourism and tournaments, that's the way to do it. You will beat your weather days a lot, but it comes at a cost, just for initial investment.
Okay. Another thing that I was reading in here, you will work with traffic control and utility companies to get everything in place for that?
Absolutely. Should there be any public infrastructure utilities, we'll coordinate that, to either have it moved if it's an easement or right-of-way, working with those providers to get that adjusted. But then any sort of new infrastructure utilities needed for the site, our team can size any of that and design it to be implemented, depending on what the scope is. So, you know, if there's electrical transmissions line, that's typically done by them, but, you know, it's, it's about, so we can handle that, absolutely.
I just see that area, traffic control being an issue.
Yes.
So, it said in your packet that you would host bi-weekly project coordination meetings? Is that by phone, live, virtual, all of the above?
It's at your choice, we're available to you however you need to, in, in the best way possible. Typically, what we do is, at, at least once a month, we will come on site, and that's really geared towards construction. During the conceptual design phase, those bi-weekly meetings aren't needed as much, but even then, we'll host maybe a 30-minute call with the key leadership or key staff that's involved with the project, just to check base, and make sure that anything we've asked of the city that we need for the project is tracking, or vice versa, anything that's needed from us. So, depending on the phase, our, our level of involvement could, could be adjusted, absolutely.
Okay. Another thing that was in the other packet was a food truck area, which, we were big softball players, my husband and I and the kids, and so we traveled a lot to state tournaments and all those kind of things, and the food trucks were always very popular. So, I, I didn't know if you had considered that in your design, or if that could be considered?
Absolutely, I mean, there is nothing to say that you can't. I think currently, food trucks aren't necessarily servicing your soccer complex, it has an existing concessions there, but just through permit, permitting and regulation, that could be opened up. As far as design within the, the concept, we don't show anything in there, but it's, it's a very easy thing to implement in those spaces, it, it's a very easy thing to program.
Okay. And then shade structures also could be added? Plague? And then shade structures also could be added, playground?
Absolutely.
Equipment?
Absolutely.
I know when parents are trying to corral their kids for an eight-hour day out in the sun, it's nice to have a shaded playground facility for those little kids to get a break from watching siblings play baseball or softball.
You are absolutely correct.
Okay, last thing I have. How big of a deal in your world is the engineering news record survey or report?
I mean, there's a number of different entities that have that. I would say, I mean, personally, I'm not an engineer, so Chris or others may have more reliance on that article or that entity, but I know it's a pretty important element within the engineering discipline.
Okay. Competitor-wise, they were ranked at number 10 for 2024, and you all were ranked at 60. So I was just wondering, do you have any ideas why there would be such a big difference between your company and the competitors?
As far as the two interview teams, so Half is also one top 20 workplace in Oklahoma City in the state, twice now, two years in a row. A lot of these different programs or award systems are based on you entering it and how much effort you push towards that. So I don't, I wouldn't say it's 100% reflection on the status of the firm, but maybe how much weight they have put into that. So I value our projects and our clients more than I do awards, and maybe that's reflected in the recognition that we've received in the ranking. But I know everybody in my office and the team that we have here are happy with the work that we do, the clients that we work with and the people in our offices. So I can only point to our project experience and what we've provided and the client satisfaction that we have.
Okay. Well, just so you know, it wasn't all negative. I'm very impressed with your presentation.
Thank you.
It's very thorough. I love the hometown connection, so well done.
Absolutely. Thank you.
For a good, good questions. Commissioner, you have my question is, as far as the construction phases and the project management of your projects, what's been you all's experience as far as costs, increase of costs on projects? Because, you know, most of the times in construction, it costs more and it takes longer, you know, really longer than what we projected to take. I mean, it's not too seldom that, you know, it gets done exactly when we projected because we have things that happen, increasing costs and weather and all those type of things. So just in consideration of that, I just wanted to know, what's been you all's experience as a company as far as the time that you start a project to the time that you end it and the cost of the project that you projected? Have you been kind of like in the middle or below or above or what?
Costs are always the most challenging thing, and one of the reasons why we brought on a partner to help us with that effort. They have ears and eyes on the street to know across other disciplines and across the industry, not only sports, but all, you know, public works and private projects, what's out on the streets, all the other projects that they're cost estimating, and they're local, so they know the local impact of those. On a recent project, actually, another sports project, the bids did come in high, and it was due to end-of-year bidding, but also all the municipal projects, both school board and municipality projects hit at the same time. So you had a pool of contractors saying, "I'm not going to do a job unless I make 40%." And that is almost impossible to forecast, you know, beforehand. But with his help, we've kind of curtailed that as much as possible. And then it's the dedication of our team. So at that point, we're not asking for more money. We're looking back at the project to say, "How can we strategically value-engineer this without losing any core element of the project?" So it's still a reality, but those things come up all the time, absolutely. And then as far as timing, we have a very good track record of submitting projects on time. And in fact, Kaplenger had a specifically, a very challenging timeline to that. They wanted to only lose one season of their playing season, and so we worked with a CMAR to do several bid packages to allow them to start construction early. I understand that maybe there hasn't been a favorable experience on CMAR, and I will say in other municipalities, it's been a challenge as well. It's not the golden bullet or the silver bullet, but it is an option that gives you some flexibility. And you kind of have to look at several projects at a time and what makes the most sense. So does that answer your question?
So have you all ever met your timelines or have you had experiences where, you know, it took a little bit longer than what you projected? And even in the cost phases of the projects?
Absolutely.
What's been you all's experience?
Yes. So as I mentioned, the majority of our projects hit the milestones in submitted dates that we commit to. There are sometimes unforeseen circumstances that prevent us from that, and really, as a part of that schedule recovery, we own that and we will search for a solution to make that time up based on critical dates or needs from the project.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Roberts?
Firstly, very impressive, very detailed. She asked a question about playgrounds, because I do have two children that will be utilizing these facilities. Forgive me if I'm mistaken, did she say that you stay on and manage the facility afterwards or do you turn it over to like a local company to manage the facility?
So that's, we do that as a company. That's not necessarily what we were talking about in here, because I didn't want it to seem like that we were trying to do that. But yes, we do manage venues full-time for, as a third-party service organization for municipalities. We have about 70 across the country from aquatic centers at baseball, softball to soccer fields. So we do that in conjunction with the staff on-site. So that is something that we can talk about at a later date if you wanted to talk about that.
Good, thank you. I did have one more question. This is from my 15-year-old daughter. Realistically, what would the possibility of putting an indoor batting cage be?
Absolutely. And that's something that we visioned out in this project, just as a spatial programming to see what can fit here. I think that with the programming of 12 fields, the need for indoor facilities is probably likely. All of this is, of course, based on cost and what the community wants. So if we're surveying, I would encourage your daughter to say, "I want an indoor facility," because, you know, we can make a recommendation based on our experience, but I always go back to the community of what do they want, because I'm not going to push my agenda or my big idea just because I think it's great. I'm responding to what you all want.
Just my seeing as doing, me having a year-round complex, if we're doing turfing, we might as well need to look into doing indoor facilities as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioner Solins? Mr. Warden? I've got a couple of questions. Couple of times I've been asked, and this is kind of a rhetorical question, but I know you made the comment, or someone did a while ago, 144-team tournament on 12 fields. That is very realistic, isn't it? I mean, I know when all my boys were playing ball, we would show up. The amount of teams were incredible. It's my experience that most of the people I've talked to that they're really involved in this, they realize that it's nothing to get 100 teams to show up.
Absolutely.
Right? I mean, that's, is that truly what you're seeing out there?
Yes, sir. I mean, the example I gave for like the Panama City Beach Sports Complex, they go seven days, basically a week from May to August. And so those opportunities are there. Again, your proximity to those metro areas are key, and again, that gives you the opportunity to host a lot of events. That home plate analogy that I gave, I used to be Parks and Recreation in College Station, Texas, and it was the center court of Texas, because Dallas and Fort Worth, they would, Dallas and Houston, they would meet in between. It's the same concept, and they're doing the same thing with soccer and baseball and softball, where we would have, a lot of the events you guys have are U-S-A, and so again, that's a great organization, but that's not perfect game, that's not ASA/USA softball, that's not Little League. There's all these other avenues that you can get even more events to come in there, and you get, visit Enid does a fantastic job, you know, regionally as well. So you have all those avenues to attract those events, and now you have the location to host that. So yes, 100 teams and above is not a problem.
I also know that our new soccer complex is just literally getting started, and they've had tournaments with 80 teams already. And I'll be honest, people like soccer around here, but we're baseball, football and basketball for the most part. Now, that's growing on the soccer side, but... So a couple of other questions that I have, and I think I know the answer to this, but I do want to make sure, when, a year ago, whenever I announced this and we put some folks together trying to come up with what, what size is it that we're trying to do, right? I mean, we were honestly just trying to pull numbers out of the air. So when we said 12 to 14 fields, four softball fields, all of a sudden I started getting all these texts, and they say, "Oh, that's not enough. That's more girls softball in the year." They didn't realize, I mean, we were literally just trying to get something down on paper. So that's something that you can analyze and tell us what our community can support, right?
Yes, sir. So we'll go into detail, based off your goals of sustainability, excuse me, feasibility, cost recovery, we'll be able to tell you what is generated. So if you do eight, 12, whatever it ends up being, say 12 as an example, we'll go through, or to be an anchor tourism venue, you need a minimum of eight fields. So at a minimum, with y'all's goals, you don't want any less than eight. Now, with your competition frenemies in the area, a lot of them are doing 12, right? So you want to make sure you're keeping up with that as well as showcasing what that cost would be, right? So you're able to go through, and we can show if you did eight, you did 10, you did 12, what that cost recovery looks like in that study. If you want to do concessions or with the food trucks, what that generates and how it affects the bottom line of dollar generation, because food and beverage is such a key part of the venue. So we can go through that and showcase what that looks like in that study for you guys.
Okay. Perfect. Next question I had was, tell me what the most common mistake other communities have made out there in building these complexes, because I do not want to make those same mistakes.
I think it's hiring the wrong team.
That's pretty good, yeah. I thought you were going to say...
I thought you were going to say making the budget too low. A good team can work with just about any budget. Really, what it comes down to is experience and designing correctly, following through with construction. Even the best plans, if not followed through and worked on with the contractor in the city, you know, may not be a good product. And so we want to make sure that we are, you know, embedded in the process throughout so they can really help you all perceive this. And yes, I mean, you're absolutely right. A miss on budget is a huge risk at the beginning of the project, and that's why I think really with this team's help, identifying exactly what the project needs from a programming standpoint, and then actually working through all those iterations to give you a very solid number with contingency and options of phasing and other things to work through any issues that we may come across.
Will our local contractors have the opportunity to quote on all this work, to bid on it?
Yeah, I mean, we would perceive this...
I'm talking about electrical contractors, dirt contractors, all those folks.
Yes. Depending on how you want to phase this out or if you do want to go with a CMAR, we can hard-bid this project in pieces or in phases in a way that would allow your local contractors to bid on the scopes. Now, some of these scopes with lighting and some of the larger elements may be outside of their expertise and would require, you know, another firm or another company to come in and do the installation and procurement of those. But your main general contractor, whoever's hired on to do that, should have the ability to work with your local trades and bring them on to this project to keep Enid dollars here.
Okay. But by selecting your firm, we're not locking into predetermined contractors?
Absolutely not, no. We wouldn't, we wouldn't get to that point until construction documents in the bidding process. Even then, we would be held to title 61 bidding process of Fair Bidding Act that requires an open process. So it's open to the lowest bidder.
It's just important to us that our local folks get an opportunity also on this.
Absolutely. And I think that's important, because we can write the scope packages in a way that would allow for that to happen.
Okay. Can you give me some really new innovations that you're starting to see out there? And I'll give you one example. I'll give you an easy one. I've looked at some other facilities, and they're doing away with scoreboards. They're doing all the, you're given a URQ code, am I saying that? A QR code.
Yes, sir.
And they just scan it when they go in, and then they're able to watch that game. They're able to see the, I mean, tell me some other cool things that are going on out there that, when we get done, we will have truly the state-of-the-art facility that's as good or better than anything else out there.
The fan and player experience has changed a lot. I wouldn't say dramatically. You know, it's still a baseball, softball game, but really, the focus now is revenue generation and providing a top-notch facility for the players and the parents. If you're keeping the parents satisfied, that's a good place to start. And with that, it's a number of amenities. So you mentioned scoreboards being removed. This, this device has changed a lot of things. No longer do you need broadcasting equipment at your fields. People strap this to the backstop, and they broadcast it on Facebook to their teams and their families, grandma that couldn't make it. And so having the spectators and visitors in mind has really changed a lot of that. J.D. can definitely speak to what, you know, that experiences across the nation and some trends that may not have arrived to you yet, because I will say, you all are ahead of the curve, but generally Oklahoma is behind. We're starting to see natural grass to artificial turf conversions all through Texas, and it's making this way. So you're at a very good spot in the timeline to capture this traffic, and J.D. can speak to some of these other trends. That was one of the trends I was going to give. So I only have two more that, and again, one of them is, seems very obvious, and I apologize, is multi-usage of fields, right? The turf aspect of it, those kind of conversations. Again, it's not a deal breaker, but being able to do so many different things for so many more hours and not getting wear and tear and consistent play, like, I know it sounds, you know, this, like, yeah, it makes sense, right? But a lot of people aren't able, don't do it or decide not to do it. And that's anything from being able to do the different sports, but also when it, safety regulations, all those things that play into that. The other one, and we were talking about our food and beverage earlier, is even to the stuff that takes place in the Major League Baseball venues and stuff where you order from your app and they bring food to you, or having set-up tailgating with your daughter, you know, with your kids, not tailgating, excuse me, having, wrong, having your, where you set your tent and your food and you, like, having a cabana-type setting already set up for you. It's already set up, and people are paying that extra, and that helps with revenue generation for the venue. Again, it's not all about the finances, but we know that it makes it a whole lot easier for us to understand, you know, the stomach when we're spending this kind of money, when it's not, you're not having to subsidize it forever, right? So those kind of things are the kind of cutting edge that they're looking at. And the other thing on the turf I was going to say is you have, like in Panama City Beach, we had what we called Z-Cap cooling technology, right? So you had the cooling technology on the turf that made it basically the same temperature or very close to the same temperature as a natural grass field, right? And so that allows, like, those kind of things, like, we would have photos of our first week of the umpires laying on the turf in between games instead of their shoes melting, right? Which is a story you always hear about. So that was a marketing tool for us. So those are the kind of things that you're seeing in people to continue to expand, but you have to be willing to pay for that extra for the cooling technology, and then we can show you what that generates because of people feeling more comfortable in the fields.
Okay. Two last questions is, talk about field sizes and adjustments. So it's my understanding that you can have one-size field, say for a U-12 team, but then if you want to, you need more T-ball teams, they have adjustable fences out there that are more than just driving a T-post and pulling barbed wire around it, right? I mean, that's what we used to do years ago. So talk about that just a little bit and how we can modify these fields to accommodate what it is that we need.
Absolutely. So just the use of artificial turf, specifically in the infield, where we're talking about baseball, softball, accommodation fields. If you do baseball, that requires a certain specific setup of your bases and your turf, if it's natural turf, but then also a different maintenance...
if it's natural turf, but then also a different maintenance equipment. If you go to softball, you almost have to completely scrape that and convert it into softball to have an entirely skinned area, to have that true softball performance for tournaments and games. Artificial turf allows you to do both. So specifically on the Kaplinger project, AC Kaplinger, we have programmed that to actually accommodate three different age groups. So we can move the bases three different locations. We have all of that infrastructure already in place with whiskers that allow you to put the bases in without any issue. It's easier for your staff. And then the artificial turf just in the infield, right? That's a cost savings, you're not doing the whole field, is able to be, has a dual use for both of those programming elements. And then for the same thing with T-ball, putting in stakes or sleeves in the outfield to put up temporary fencing or even sandbagging and doing a semi-permanent fence structure is an option there as well. One of the options that we were talking about, and like I said, we could have generated 100 concepts and still not captured exactly what you're looking for. But just with what we were looking at, you can put a T-ball field on each corner of that larger flex field that has the softball or soccer, football embedded into it and actually have four T-ball fields on each field without impacting the soccer, football component or the baseball, softball, adult or youth field. So there's a lot of different options there in terms of flexibility. And really with just a little bit more investment or creative approach to the thing, to the project, you can have a lot of different options just depending on what you need in the end.
Okay. I will tell you down at David Allen Memorial Park this year, this past year, for a couple reasons, we are now up to almost 450 games a year on that one field. It's just insane. So what we're finding out, now that we, the Juco World Series has extended from 10 teams to 12, we need to have overflow fields that they can go to. So we're needing to have full-size fields that can also later be used for, you know, U-12 or whatever it happens to be. So we're trying to think ahead on this, how can we take some of the strain off of that facility down there? Because who knows, they may want to go to 16 teams in another year or two. We want to be able to accommodate that. Also the Connie Mack tournaments that come in, they want larger teams, or larger fields, obviously. So. My last question, and I will preface it with this, you talked about an entrance into this facility or two entrances. Having talked to several of the people that put up, the group that put up most of the money for the soccer complex, I'll put it that way, has said that we can use that entrance that they already have out there, which is a great entrance. I don't know if you saw that, but my thought is, we're going to get one chance to make a first impression on these teams when they come in. It's going to be important to us to have, what I wrote down in my paper, a wow factor. Something when they turn that corner, because any way you look at it, and I love Enid, that's my home, but it's pretty flat and a lot of these pictures that I've seen in your packet has rows of trees and forest and that's not us. So somehow we've got to figure out how these teams, we can get them here, we've got to keep them here over the years that they want to keep coming back time and time again. We can do that with the service, the service that they get, we can do that with the surface that they play on, but it needs to be a really great place, just like when they go downtown to the David Allen Memorial Park. I hear comments on that over and over and over and I've got to have something that people go, that's an amazing facility, you need to go to Enid. So how can we get that and know that we're going to get that?
You have a great start of that already at the soccer complex with the roundabout entrance and really a grand arrival sequence. And that's why we really wanted to think outside of the perimeter of our site. What is your arrival sequence as you're coming from 88 or 35 into town? The signage that gets you to the complex itself? This is a much larger thought process than the 12 fields. So that's really where we start is where are people coming from? How are they getting to the site? The wayfinding that takes them through town, what are the corridors that they're going through? Not that we're designing that, but it's something we need to think about and work with you all to kind of vet out. And then once they get to the site, just as the soccer complex is established with their first entry, maybe not as grand on each individual entrance to the site, but some sort of arrival sequence to let you know that you've arrived and that, you know, it's a place to celebrate and recognize that when you see the specific architecture, you want to stay and be there, you don't want to leave the grounds, you know? Everything that you need for a game should be within the project site and within this community. So that's kind of where I go is.
I just want them to be as excited as the Griswolds were when they got to Wally World, right?
Absolutely.
So, okay. All right. Very good. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir. As far as you all managing it or helping us out as far as bringing teams into Enid for tournaments, will you all be in charge of marketing that or is that something we have to do as far as the city of Enid and our staff?
So if down the line, you guys decided you're looking for us to potentially manage it, part of, included in that full-time management is marketing, working with Visit Enid though, just to make it a cohesive voice and working with the city to make sure that it's cohesive voice. But yes, we have a full marketing agency built into our company. So we have a staff of, I think it's 18 individuals. We have over 3,000 employees across the country that help with these venues and support. So yes, we would take care of that. Yes, we would help get venue or get events along with, again, Visit Enid. Again, every city is different, so I don't want to say it's an absolute, right? So you guys may, like, hey, we want to do marketing and booking events internally, we want someone to operate and manage and do the programming. Or no, hey, do everything but programming because the recreation triad and the Y and the city does such a great job, we don't want to do any of those things. We're going to take care of that. So it's, again, the, your goals are our goals, what makes the most sense. And we have different communities across the country that we manage in different ways. So.
And if you all were to be a part of the marketing team, if it was a joint area, just you or just us, if you all were involved in it, does the maintenance also include, is that included in that as well as far as, you know, the venue operating correctly and us being successful?
Yeah.
You know, would you all help maintain the facilities, keeping them clean and those type of things?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I said it's GM, I was on site for basically 12 to 14 hours a day with my staff of seven and 30 part-timers off and on throughout the year. And we took care of trash restrooms, booking events, supporting the events, golf cart driving, mowing. Anything and everything that goes into the venue, we will take care of as part of that agreement, unless you don't want us to, and then we can work through that process.
One last quick question. I know we're getting close to 6:30. My last question is, I've heard a lot about baseball and softball, but we're big here as well on Little League football in Enid. We're really big in that area. As far as the Little League fields, on your rendering of the picture here, I don't see any bleachers. Is that something that is possible, you know, that we have bleachers for the parents and grandparents that come to the Little League football games?
Absolutely. You know, the rendering was, was just to set off vision. We didn't want to convey that we had found the solution and this is what we were recommending necessarily. There's room for food trucks and bleachers, all of those things come with the project. How we have things laid out could be tweaked and likely, you know, should be to fit your needs, but you know, bleachers of different sizes could be accommodated in those locations. And specifically where we showed the two premier fields with artificial turf, we were trying to economize the existing press box that was there in some of those facilities so that it could kind of be a joint central hub for, you know, kind of that celebration championship area. But with those fields, there's absolutely room for bleachers.
Okay. Because I was looking at the perimeters of this picture here and I was just seeing if we would have enough room to do that.
Like the mayor said, we want to hit it out the park the first time.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Just a comment, with some additional money in the Public Art Commission budget, we might be able to help you out on the visual aspect you're looking for out there.
I bet you said on that commission.
I might.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
What I'm going to do, since we're out of time, we thought this would be about 30 minutes per group. What I'm going to do in, I'm going to adjourn us until 6:30. When we come back for our regular meeting, whenever I get to 4.7, we have a section in there that we can, per the agenda, go back to our study session questions. And so I'm going to give Kim Lee Horn that time right there. That way I want to make sure they have as much time as your team did.
Understand. Thank you so much.
Very good.
All right. Very good. Thank you all very much. And we will adjourn and start back up at 6:30.